I'm going to call the May 28th meeting of the Esthenea Planning Commission to order. If you'll stand and salute the flag. Can we have the roll?
Commissioner, Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Vice Chair Romo.
Here.
Chairman Span.
Here.
Commissioner McNair.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
And Commissioner Watson.
Here.
All present.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for our last meeting?
Both to approve.
Do we have a second? We moved and seconded. We vote? Six yes. Okay, do we have written communication?
Yes Chair, there are two items that are placed in front of you this evening. Both pertain to item G1, the first public hearing, which staff will cover during the presentation. Both relate to conditions of approval that were proposed with requests of modifications.
Okay, need. Future neighborhood meetings?
None to report.
Okay. Oral communications, does anybody in the audience wish to speak about something that's not under term? Seeing none, we're going to move on to public hearing. Master and precise development plan for 127-unit mixed-use development within the downtown specific plan. PHG 19, dash, zero, zero, one, zero. Does anybody up here have anything to disclose before we move on? Seeing none.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Bill Martin, I'm the Community Development Director. And seated to my left is Peggy Chapin. She's our contract planner who's been assisting with this project. And this is the Ivy, one of two touchdown projects in the downtown area. It's a proposal for a master and precise development plan for a 127-unit apartment structure. 1,175 square feet of commercial, underground parking. Also includes a density bonus as well as a density transfer. And we'll get into those in some more detail later on. A development agreement and a SEQA exemption. So here's a look at the site in the downtown area. It's surrounded essentially by streets. Second Avenue to the north, Ivy Street to the east, Third Avenue to the south, and then a public alley directly to the west. Project site is located within the historic district of the downtown specific plan area that was adopted in 2013. That area does permit ground floor commercial and there's 1,175 square feet of that proposed. Multi-family residential is permitted up to 75 dwelling units per acre and 127 units are proposed. The number of stories permitted is four stories and five stories are proposed. And we'll discuss that. The permitted height is 60 feet and the building height for this particular project ranges from 63 feet to 75 feet. And we'll clarify how that occurs as well. Here's a quick look at the downtown specific plan just to re-familiarize yourself with the area. You can see the Ivy project is highlighted right here. This gives you a sense of where it is in relation to some of the other development projects in the downtown area. The two green ones out to the west, Latitude 2 and the Gateway Grand are under construction. And the various orange ones are either are in the planning process, including the redevelopment of the Palomar Hospital Site, which is called Palomar Heights. And then the other touchdown project, Spire, which is directly to the south of where we are today. So just to re-familiarize yourself also with some of the downtown specific plan goals. They include ensuring economic viability, creating a local and regional destination, foster a vibrant atmosphere that offers mixed uses, provide for street level and even design elements, offer higher residential densities that support downtown businesses, and expand pedestrian connections and alternative transportation while providing opportunities to live or play within the downtown area. So here's the proposed project. This is the proposed master plan and shows the layout on the site. It's again a 127-unit mixed-use five-story structure. There's eight studio units being proposed at 550 square feet. There's 59 one-bedroom units being proposed ranging from 630 to 700 square feet. There's 62 bedroom units proposed ranging from 820 to 995 square feet. The proposal includes nine units for very low-income households as part of the state's density bonus law program. And then there's also private balconies for each unit and laundry inside each unit as well, which would meet our condominium standards, even though these are proposed as apartments. 1,175 square feet of commercial space that's located on the first floor at the corner of East Second and Ivy Street, essentially in this area right here. And then there's a two-story garage with one level below grade. It's a partial level. And that includes 157 parking spaces, including 26 tandem spaces, storage lockers for the units, bicycle storage, as well as an interior trash enclosure within that parking garage. There's 27 guest and public parking spaces that will be provided out on the adjacent streets. And you can see them kind of marked in these areas here. This just shows you the two levels of parking. And so the one on the left is kind of the grade level parking where you enter in from the alley on the western side, enter into the parking structure here, or you can go down into the lower level, which is in a partial lower level, providing parking in this area for residents. Resident-only parking is in the garage. Both South Ivy Street and the alleys to the west will be converted to southbound only traffic for the one block that the project takes up. This allows for the additional street parking on Ivy. Also, the alley does not meet current width requirements for two-way traffic and the southbound flow provides a quicker access into the parking garage and then eliminates conflicts for vehicles exiting out onto Second Avenue to the north. So all traffic will be directed to the south from Second to Third Avenue, both in the alley and in Ivy Street. This is the first-floor diagram. It gives you a good indication of how some of the open space for the project lays out. And so there's four common open space areas totaling 13,332 square feet. This northern open space area is the largest one. It's a pool and spa, barbecue and lounge. There's also 1,746 square foot water feature and seating area. There's this secondary open space here. There's also a fitness center, club rooms, media room provided for the residents. Rooftop deck on the fifth floor, top of the fifth floor, kind of in the northwest corner of the project. There's the leasing office, lobby and mailroom. And then about 8,200 square feet of private balconies for use by the residents. Here you have a look at the elevations for the site. Over on the left you can see the Ivy Street elevation as well as the Third Avenue, which is the southern elevation. Again, it's five stories over the parking, which is subterranean from this viewpoint. And then this area here is where you would see the small commercial space and along Second, which would flow in this area here. Over here you are looking at the reverse angle. So this is from the alley where you have the entry into the parking area. And then you can see where some of the open space lays out. The larger one right through here at this level. And then the secondary open space area right through here. And then this is the Second Avenue elevation that is the northern elevation of the building. Here's some perspectives to give you another look at it. With this curving street you get an interesting front on the building. There's a lot of variation in the walls as the building kind of makes this curve around the area. So this is looking southwest from the corner of Ivy and Second. And then this one's looking east from Second and the Alley. Here's that rooftop deck I was talking about earlier. And then you can also see the open space areas. Some of the architectural features include a variety of roof parapet heights and wall planes. There's accents at pedestrian entry points, stucco film surrounds on the windows, earth-toned colors. There's a variety of materials being used, including stucco, concrete block, metal siding and rails. And as I mentioned, and you can see here, there's a balcony provided for each one of the units. So here's a look at the floor plans. This is the second, third and fourth floor, which essentially would be identical for the floor plans. And then over here you can see just a couple. I just included a couple to give you a sense of how some of the units lay out. These are just three of the seven different floor plans that are provided in the project. So a couple of features of the project, one being a request for a density bonus. The city's housing element goals remove constraints for providing affordable housing. The RENA goals provide 40% of housing for low-income housing. And then the state of California's density bonus law encourages affordable housing, allowing up to a 35% increase in density for projects provided. In this case, 11% of that base density is set aside for very low-income households. Some of the incentives that are being requested in accordance with state law in return for providing affordable housing. So there's a request to reduce the required parking from 234 spaces to 184 spaces, including the 27 guest spaces on the street. There's also a request to reduce the street side yard setback on East Second Avenue from 14 feet that's required in the downtown specific plan to 12 foot, one inch. And this is really being requested as well to reduce some lane width on East Second to allow the construction of bike lanes. There's also a request to reduce open space from 300 square feet per unit to 171 square feet per unit and increase the permitted height from 60 feet, four stories, to a range of 63 feet to 75 feet and five stories. All of these are necessary in order to provide for the affordable housing component of the project. There's also a request to participate in the city's new density transfer program. So this is a REIT's ordinance that was approved by the City Council, I believe, last month, earlier this month, for the downtown area. So developers can exceed project densities on a case-by-case basis subject to a planned development and development agreement approval. So the city's going to start this program by transferring 48 units from Municipal Parking Lot Number Four to the density credit pool. And then over time, the density credit pool will be increased by transfer in from underutilized or undeveloped properties throughout the downtown area. So this project is the first request from the density credit pool and they're requesting an additional 24 dwelling units from that pool as provided in the density transfer program. So how does that all work out with respect to density and the yield calculation? So this gives you kind of a step-by-step to how we get to 127 units. So it's just a fairly overall nature of site that allows for 75 dwelling units per acre or 76 units. So that's the base density. The request for a 35% density bonus for affordable units would add 27 units. Nine of those would be restricted for very low-income households. And then the units being requested from the density transfer program would add another 24 units. So that's how you get to the total number of units being proposed, which is the 127 units. Talk a little bit about parking and how we get to the number that is being requested. And so you can see on the left-hand side the unit types, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, the number of units of each, as well as the guest. So the second column would be the proposed number of spaces that are being provided for residents and guests. And that would be the 184 number there at the bottom. The third column is the amount of parking that's required by the state for a density bonus project that's within a half-mile of a major transit stop. And so that would essentially be a half a space per bedroom. And guest parking is not required by the state. And so to be consistent with state law, they'd be required to provide 94 parking spaces. And then if they were to develop it entirely consistent with the downtown specific plan, you can see the parking numbers that would be provided over there all the way to 234 spaces. So the state would allow 94 spaces and they're proposing 184. So as I mentioned, there is a development agreement with this proposal as well that's required by the density transfer program. Development agreement is a voluntary legal agreement between the city and the developer, which is required in this case by that density transfer. The developer receives increased certainty for constructing the project as well as, in this case, 24 units from the downtown density transfer program. And then a freeze on building permit fees at the July 2nd, 2018 level. And we calculate that that would provide $420,000 savings to the developer at today's fee levels. But that could be substantially increased by the time this project ultimately is built as fee increases are now to continue. So that's quite a savings and quite a benefit that's being provided to the developer through the development agreement. There's benefit to the city as well through the development agreement. The city receives more than what it could normally be required with respect to some park fees. In this case, a specific $300,000 payment to the city to fund ballfield fencing in Kit Carson Park. So with respect to SEQA, the project qualifies for an exemption under infill development projects. An exemption document was prepared by Harrison Suss. Project is consistent with general plan policies, substantially surrounded by urban uses, no value for endangered habitat or rare and threatened species. Would not result in significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality or water quality. And it can be served by utilities and public services. So I want to go through the proposed modifications to the conditions of approval. There's a handout on the dais for you. Several pages, and I want to just walk through each of these. These were requested by the applicant. And so the ones I'm going to talk about first, planning conditions, starting with project design measures, number nine. And so there's a request to delete one sentence referring to a figure in that project design measure that showed the location of a temporary sound barrier. The temporary sound barrier will still be required. The location could vary a little bit depending on the need. And so we're okay with that proposed change. The second one, planning condition number one. There's a request to delete some of the language regarding the fees and just note that the fees would be as specified in the development agreement. And so we're okay with that one as well. The development agreement has set the fees at the 2018 rate. At the bottom of the page, number six, we're going to request to delete that one because it's a duplicate condition that's covered elsewhere in the conditions of approval. Same with condition number 10, that's also a duplicate condition. So we're proposing to delete that condition. Condition number 20 is regarding the trash enclosures within the parking garage. And there's one word, underground, that we're seeking to delete because the trash enclosure would actually be at the grade level. So that's not an issue. Number 21, we're okay with deleting that condition because there are no decorative pavement, driveways or sidewalks proposed on the plans. Condition number 23, we're just looking for a clarification to the language there to insert as shown, to clarify that the parking garage is okay as shown on the plans. And then on the next page, landscaping condition number 34, it has a typo we're looking to fix. Landscaping condition number 39 seeks to insert some additional language to indicate consistency with the concept landscape plan. And the last one is onsite management plan, condition number 42. Again, fixing a typo there. And then the last sheet is some of the engineering conditions that there was a request to change. And Owen, you want me to just go through this one altogether? Okay, I'm on a roll. So the first one, streets improvements, condition number two. So the first paragraph, they're okay with clarifying that with per the planned, plot plan, and as further specified by various conditions of approval. The next two, request to change conditions from the applicant. Streets and improvement, speed improvement and traffic, number seven and number nine. The engineering department does not favor changing those. And so suggesting those remain as they are. And then repayment and fees, condition number two, should be handled the same as planning commission, condition number one. Add the language in quotes saying, "subject to any specific development agreement terms still in effect when the fees are due." So all of those proposed modifications to the conditions are included in the staff recommendation for approval. Staff does recommend that you approve the project and recommend that the City Council also approve the proposed master and precise development plan and development agreement inclusive of those changes to the conditions and authorize the issuance of a SEQA notice of exemption. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, staff?
Thank you, Mr. Martin, for a very good presentation there. I've only got a couple of minor questions. And this is just more for clarification on my part. On a number of the floors and also in the parking area, there are storage areas. I'm assuming those are for the tenants? And do those just get assigned per tenant? And is there enough for each tenant?
Yeah, the storage areas in the garage are to essentially comply with the condominium requirement of 80 cubic feet of storage per unit. And so that's where that's provided. And they're also in the, some of the interior hallways as well.
Right. Okay. And along Second, no, not Second, along Ivy where it's going to now become a one-way street with the diagonal parking. Is there going to be street parking permitted on, I guess that'd be the east side? Or would that be, you know, help line is red or?
Mr. Tunnel, answer that.
Yeah, no, the diagonal parking is the only parking now, when that becomes one-way.
And then what happens on the east side of the street?
The curb line, for the most part, stays the same except for the bulbout locations at each, an entry and exit area.
So I guess the question is, will parking be permitted on that side of the street?
No, the easterly side of Ivy would be no parking now.
Got it. I just needed that for clarification purposes. And then the bulb at the very end and the design of that, is that designed in such a way so that it will clearly prevent people going the wrong way up the one-way street?
Yeah, the actual, it's shown there, kind of in a very simplistic fashion there. But you know, we see the final design occurring in final engineering with, you know, fire being involved as well.
Okay.
Bill, I have a couple of quick ones for you. Does retail space, is there any parking provided for loading, loading zone there?
There's no specified loading zone, although over in this area. Is that a fire? So I don't know if that's going to be right here or not, but that's an area that's, so I guess it will be right here. So there is not a specified loading area for the, for the purpose of this.
Okay. And then, it may be premature, but just for the intended use, does the, does the applicant, has the applicant said whether they intend to a type 20 or 21 license?
We have not gotten that far, sir.
Could we go back to the subterranean parking for just a moment? I have one question on that. So I think to my right, I'm seeing subterranean. To the left is sort of at grade-ish. Is that?
Yeah, it's at grade at the alley on this end. But then this is all retaining wall over here on the west, eastern side.
I guess the question I have was, it looks like there's about a 50 space, not deficit, but I guess gap between city standard and what they're proposing at 184. Could, at the south end there, what would preclude us from finding a little more parking there? Probably looking right, yeah, right there. What am I looking at that would prevent it?
Just cost of taking more dirt out and going subterranean even further.
And one last question. I read in the, another excellent staff report that it looked like the applicant was anticipating a 2019 start for the 20-month duration. Is that still on?
You could ask the applicant, I don't know.
And then I wonder also if, perhaps this is a question for the applicant, but does a 20-month build-out see all 227 built? There was some mention of phasing it. I guess I could ask the applicant.
Yeah, we haven't talked about phasing with them, so I don't believe that's part of the project.
Okay. I think it mentioned that they had the option to do phasing if they wanted to. Okay, that's my experience. Thank you.
I've just got a couple of questions. I'm a little concerned on the parking in that it seems like not enough parking spaces for the residents and especially the guest parking. I suspect that would be taken up by residents who can't find parking inside for their second or third car. Is there anything to prevent residents from parking in the guest spots?
We do have a condition that requires a parking management plan. And so we can make that part of the management plan that, for instance, sticker cars could not be in the guest parking spots.
And a curious question, the rooftop deck has passive seating.
Yes.
What does passive seating mean?
I guess it means it's not a ball court.
Oh, okay. Just a place to sit and watch.
Yeah, it's just an area to seat and watch a sunset or enjoy.
And where are the HVAC units located for each of the?
There's actually a roof plan in the packet. But they're grouped in, I think, four or five different areas on the roof, and so the area. Page 59?
I apologize for missing that. I thought I'd looked at everything.
Yeah, page 59.
All right. I think that includes a question. Thank you.
Back to the guest parking. The guest parking, as I was in front of, is that also going to be utilized for the retail parking?
Yeah, it would be. It's public parking, so it wouldn't be reserved, yes, so it would be public parking for use by the public guests as well as any customers of whatever the retail uses. And keep in mind then, in the downtown specific plan, in the, in this area, that parking is not required for commercial uses, only residential uses.
I have a few questions. So you indicated that they were going to give us $300,000 to build that, and the staff report paging, the last paragraph, the last sentence is that the city council, so in fact, they really don't want to give us $300,000, is that correct?
Well, we shall see. Yeah, that has been the most recent discussion, as we were winding this up to get it here in front of you. They may be seeking relief from the council from that payment requirement, but that'll be up to them and the council to.
And then if I understand this correctly, in the unit count, there's 127 units. Twenty-four of those units are gifts, we're giving basically, because we don't have to give approval at density transfer if we so desire.
That's correct.
That's correct, correct. In regards to that, each floor has 27 units, correct?
It does.
Yes. So basically, they're getting one floor, the fifth floor, for free. If I just kind of do the math, I mean, they're actually going to give up, they're going to pick up three extra floors, three extra units. I know they're going to lose the three extra units, excuse me, my math isn't that good.
Yeah, it sounds like it's very close to an additional floor, I guess.
Right, basically. Then on the alleyway, that's a 20-foot alley?
Yes.
And what they're proposing with the track report was, I can't remember, it was like 600 daily trips, is that right? Do you recall?
Yeah, I believe it's 806 with the retail as well.
So that alleyway now doesn't have that kind of volume whatsoever, at this point, I would suspect, at this point. I mean, it's a pretty narrow alleyway, and then we're going to have trash trucks going down there. Are they resourced?
They're conditioned for a grind and overlay and replace the ribbon gutter if it's damaged as well. It is improved with, you know, base, you know, right now, it's actually one of our better alleys, but we anticipate it to be degraded in construction, and so we've asked for, you know, a grind and overlay and replacement of the ribbon gutter, basically bring it back to its.
Bring it back.
Yeah.
Let me just go, I just have, I read the previous thing pretty quickly. Thank you, by the way, it was a great presentation. Then if we go ahead and take off 171 square feet, or I'm sorry, we have 171 square feet versus 300 square feet for usable space, but we took that floor off, what would that change the outside area? Would that make it a better living environment for them? Because it'd pick up some extra, it'd actually reduce your square footage, so your square footage per space, that would increase too, which we're giving them that benefit as well.
Yeah, your square footage per unit would increase a little bit, but I don't know.
Still losing my 300 grand from it.
Yeah, I don't know that the physical.
That's the point, is I'm losing 300 grand in this deal, and I don't think we should be doing it. Then the last thing I noticed in here, and Mark kind of alluded to it, is that they could phase this project if they so desired. It says that in here someplace, and I haven't, but I remember that. It does say it in the conditions, someplace in here it says.
We could, we could talk to the applicant about that.
Okay. And then in addition to that, it looks like, are we able to say that this needs to be started within 24 months, or is it five years, and then they can keep asking for extensions forever and ever? How do we put it into that impertinence?
So the development agreement is good for a term of five years, and all of the entitlements, including the plan development, are vested through that term, and so they would have five years to essentially start construction.
Okay. And that, that was my question, and then they can just renew it for how much longer after that, or for some reason things go badly?
Well, a development agreement is a negotiated agreement, so they would have to re-enter into negotiations with the city to see if they could extend it if it's not started by that five-year period.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it? Just one quick question, that five-year period, would that go to the staff, or would it come back to the planning commission to renegotiate that?
A development agreement would go to the planning commission and city council for final approval.
Now, as far as, they're already getting the benefit of the fees from prior to right now. If they were to not start building this, would they have procured the permits now, or could they go on for four years before they pull permits?
Now, five years from now, they could pay 2018 fees.
Which are going to be substantially.
Well, the hope is they would construct a lot sooner than that.
Right. Okay. One last.
One last question. When's the next fee increase?
The next fee increase, we are looking at now heading to council with some of our permit fees, the next development impact fee increase, I don't know, we've gone through the three phases that we've already gone through on that or not? Chair, if I may, I think the third phase is coming up on this next fiscal year cycle, but there is a CPI escalator associated with some of the fees, so every year there will be a gradual increase in some of the fees.
What would those increase next year to?
Just a curiosity, do you know? Yeah, the increase next year brings the downtown fees up to the level of the citywide fees. The downtown fees, if you recall, were extremely discounted, and so when they were increased by the council, because it was such a substantial increase, it was done in three phases.
Any other questions?
Your questions, now the time that I get to, would now be the time to ask the permit applicant?
I believe the applicant has a. Is the applicant, Yelso?
Yes.
Why, let's bring him up. Okay, at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing, I do have some requests to speak, and when these are over, if you want to talk, ask you to fill out a slip, and when you come to the podium, if you'd state your name or the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, I would appreciate it. Carol Ray.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm Carol Ray. You'll be surprised, I'm actually relieved that this project is in an appropriate place and can appropriate those located near other apartments and away from the historic downtown. However, I'm concerned about parking as well, it's just not adequate. Where the city downtown specific plan states 234 spaces, in this case, only 184 will be offered, 27 of those on the street, that's really how the parking doesn't count, so if you're really down to 57 spaces for all those units in an area where parking is already new already, just because you don't have enough parking doesn't mean people who get rid of your cars not getting out of them. And once again, I'm here to say that the staff report is inaccurate again, stating that the historic preservation commission, Old Escondido, were reached out to for input when the historic preservation commission was not asked for input, they were told what would be happening, and the Old Escondido, I was at both meetings, Old Escondido Historic District neighbors were absolutely opposed to, okay, 90% opposed to much of this downtown development, and not just because of the height and historical design features, they are concerned about the density, the amount of traffic it's going to bring in and around that neighborhood and into downtown in a negative way. I also wonder if the apartment dwellers and owners across Ivy from this project were contacted. Those residents enjoy the view that apparently now the rooftop will offer a new project. Also, I hope that the city will hold the developer to paying, required to pay at least $300,000. And while I understand the ballpark fence at Carson Park is probably an important issue, I would like to propose that we consider helping out Great Day Park, which is named in the staff report as a place where kids and people can enjoy the outdoors since it's absent here. Great Day Park does indeed have quite a few amenities, but if you go and look at them, the Victorian house is in channels, its paint is falling off, pieces are falling off, and they're sorely in need of this kind of funding. The bar is looking bad, we need to move the women's club building on Broadway to the park, we need funds for that. If you're going to suggest that Great Day Park is going to be a place that these people can use, I offer that they should be the beneficiaries of the fees. Finally, I also am concerned that, I'm not sure how the excavation will be done for the lower garage, but I'm wondering if steps will be taken to protect the historic properties in the downtown and the Old Escondido neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Maya Rosas.
Good evening, my name is Maya Rosas, I'm the director of Paulus, Circulate San Diego. Circulate San Diego is a nonprofit mission to create excellent mobility choices and vibrant, healthy communities. Most people who know Circulate are familiar with our work promoting walking and biking infrastructure and education. In addition to transportation, we run a program called the Circulate Mobility Certification, which reviews and certifies sustainable growth projects that meet criteria relating to active transportation, proximity to transit, and pedestrian-friendly design, similar to LEED certification. That LEED was extensively reviewed by an independent working panel, NOSFIP, and has earned Circulate's Mobility Certification. The project will bring much-needed housing in a location next to bike lanes on Second Avenue, within downtown Escondido, within walking distance of multiple bus routes, among many other positive features that make this project a model of Escondido. Including the reduction in parking, more and more people who are living in apartments utilize the cheap alternative like Uber and Lyft to get around. This type of development provides new housing opportunities for individuals, families, or couples who can easily walk to the local cafes, restaurants, and shops downtown. New residents can be a part of the Escondido community and walk to the performing arts center, or the library, or hear the speaking to the comments. People who work downtown at City Hall, at Central Elementary School, or the Center for the Earth meeting may even live there. Importantly, this type of housing will allow more people who grew up in Escondido to continue to live near home instead of moving to more rural regions like Riverside or Arizona. The ID relies on the density transfer program, and it's just one example of the positive outcomes that would result from its approval, because we need all the housing we can get. I hope you can support this shared vision that serves the goal of Escondido's downtown specific plan of making downtown a place to live personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Forster.
Good evening, I'm Dan Forster, Escondido Downtown Business Association vice president. I just want to say that we at the Downtown Business Association are in favor of this project, like in Seattle, are in favor of freezing the fees as long as the provision for your project is brought to completion in this specific time. So I think that having this project on the density corridor, the traffic corridor, is a great idea, just wanted to say so. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Gers.
We'd like to ask a question.
Okay, why don't we have Nicole Purvis, and then you can come up.
Hello, my name is Nicole Purvis, I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm a supporter of participation and whole transparency. I am absolutely amazed that the applicant has requested a last verdict exception for this project when the proposal for clearly states on page 153 that development projects in the downtown specific planning area have potential to impact a variety of resources. There's the exception. So please don't grant the exception, the exemption, please make sure that you allow public participation and transparency through this entire project.
Thank you. Carrie Gers.
Good evening, commissioners, we have, I'm Carrie Gers, and this is the Garden of the New York Communitys. We have no prepared presentation, but we'd like to ask you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question for you, Commissioner Romo was on page 115, pardon me. In this report that we're seeing that construction is anticipated in 2019 with a garage repair raising 20-month duration, is that still valid?
Commissioner Watson, yes, we do, so we're trying to get the project out of the ground this year or by the year of August.
And then, if it goes to a 20-month duration, does that, is that the equivalent to, or does that, are we to understand that 127 full build-out over 20 months?
Yes.
And then, I also wanted to ask for retail space, did you have any, do you have any designs for that yet? You know, if you're going to have a type 20 beer wine or spirits license in that space?
We don't have any plans for it at this point.
Last thing, I know we talked about, I touched on it briefly before, but I am a little bit confused by the parking. It looks like to get to an Escondido city standard of 234 is your 184, make up that deficit, but not more spaces, the excavate in the subterranean space?
Yes, theoretically. The. Yes, theoretically. The, project, if you see that layout of it, that underground portion is very deep on that side. The excavation of it would be very difficult and expensive. When we did the demolition of the previous building that was there, we had to brace up, leave a wall in place to build a building and brace it up to hold the road in place. We tried to avoid that area at this point for excavation, but overall the cost will be very competitive to excavate in that area. The project will be more difficult to drive, then, than driving to the airport.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up to answer our questions. We've got a question on what looks like a request to be relieved from the three hundred thousand dollar public benefit. Can you give us some more details on why that request is being made?
Sure. The, we started on this project about four years ago. I've been city manager, assistant city manager. Nobody else was looking at building anything of this magnitude in downtown Escondido. At the time, the city was trying to encourage us to come to town and, you know, we could be projects here and they wanted something that happened downtown. Spent a lot of time studying what could be done downtown to increase activity and working on the street and also work with businesses. And at the time, the city was looking to the right minds to send us for us to do that in, in order to build this type of very expensive, podiumed building. And you know, those projects have been built, but they're not to this level. They're more hostile, they're proposing three-story condo homes, much cheaper construction. But the city wanted marquee buildings in the downtown core, which are very expensive. So we've been involved in the process now for these four years. Times going on, costs have gone up significantly, at least thirty-five percent in the last few years. So contractors and drills. Fee increases started during our process of it, but the city had them frozen for a while and they decided to start increasing them. So those fee increases went out to over two and a half million dollars on bulk car pockets downtown. So knowing who called in on this project, substantial cost increase to a bucket like this, which is already very difficult to pencil in Escondido through the rent rates and pricing. So the city said, if they were going to freeze the, freeze the fees, that in the maximum budget in return, the fee decrease might save us to more than four hundred thousand dollars from where we're now next year projected. But they can ask for three hundred thousand dollars back on it. It's not an incentive, it's, it's not helping the project to pencil. The project's already difficult financially to pencil. So we're, we're asking for relief on the three hundred thousand dollar additional cost. But then, well, hold on, we didn't understand, trying to give you more, I think you just understand we're just not ready developers here, trying to free. It's a very difficult project to make happen.
And thank you for the explanation. I, I guess, you know, and this is probably a follow-up to Commissioner Romo and, and what he has brought up before, which is, you know, a density transfer of twenty-four units. So that seems to offset a few things along with the, with the freeze in the fees. So I just want to say at least at this point, thank you for the explanation, but I don't need for the comment.
So, so for the last, when did you start this project?
I worked on it four years.
So for the last four years, you planned on having one hundred and twenty-seven units?
Well, let me address that. So when we started the project, you know, we're the only developer proposing a project in downtown core right now, this kind of view. And the city was very adamant about the, I call it, the building spirit. So when we started the process, the city actually approached us about increasing density in our projects because there's been a lack of building in the downtown core and where we're at. As you know, we're having extreme shortage of housing in San Diego County. So the city said, look, we're a thousand units behind on where we'd like to do at this point. Can you please look at adding another floor and adding more units into your projects to help get more people and more units? Because every developer, I mean, the pipeline is under building. We understand that. We're developers, we're, what else are we doing? The city said, look, please stretch it. We need the units. We're asking you to do a high-tech building and add some units. And so it's, it's not that those units are free for us. They cost us a lot of money for the buildings that are for the floor, for the additional parking and mix the project. You know, that one's more difficult, trust me. It'd be easier if I could come in and propose a three-story building and do something practical or help with that, but we're trying to work in the interest of the city to develop something great for downtown. Because this is the catalyst to hopefully bring more projects like this to our town and get more customers here for retailers and just like any other.
So when did they ask you exactly to have more units?
Uh, day one.
To one hundred and twenty-seven?
It's been a process.
So when did they ask you to go to one hundred and twenty-seven? When did they ask you to go to one hundred and twenty-seven? Did, did you want twenty-seven?
The, the number varies.
You couldn't have done it at day one because the zoning didn't allow it and we didn't have the density. I understand. I understand. But it's, it's just happened recently, within the last six months that you've gone to one hundred and twenty-seven, probably if then even, I'm suspecting.
Yeah, I was just asking about us, yeah, in the transfer. Yeah, so exactly. The city's been offering a transfer.
Rose it for you, before and you agreed to the three hundred thousand before that even occurred? Or you had at least mentioned, you guys had had that conversation? And I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of how we had one agreement and you moved forward with it. You increased the density, now you're changing the agreement at the last minute here. And I, I like the project. Don't get me wrong. I, I do. I really appreciate having folks downtown, because it's gonna bring three hundred and fifty probably new people to the downtown area. But at the same time, at some point, somebody made a commitment there to do that, and now that's not the end.
We planned the project from the beginning to have additional S D, that would come from, from the park fashion from the city. And then the last six months, we applied the state's density bonus program to add that to on top of that. So the S D from the city can top it off for years.
And what was that originally? I mean, you have to know, you're a developer and you've been working on the project for four years. You know that thing inside. One hundred and twenty-something units.
Twenty, twenty-something units from the city would be added on to seventy-six, that's a lot.
Got it. Okay, thank you. So you still have twenty-four more units extra. Can't anybody else have a question? Thank you so much. Okay, does anybody in the audience that has not come forward, just to speak on this? Seeing nothing, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask commissioners for comments.
I like the project. I think the architecture is beautiful. I, I like the ins and outs of the building. I understand the applicant's request for the density bonus and the extra twenty-four units. I am concerned about the parking, but when we go down the pathway of, of what's required by the state for a density bonus and using the state density bonus law to do so, parking requirements are extremely low. We're talking ninety, ninety-four parking stalls. So the applicant is provided up to a hundred and eighty-something. Granted, that's less than what's allowed or what's required by, by, by the city code. But the applicant has that opportunity all the way down to ninety, and we don't have much of a say in it. Which is unfortunate, but this is handed down by the state. I would like to see more parking, because I think it's gonna be an issue. But if there's gonna be a parking management plan put in place, I hope that that is successful and that parking does not spill out, you know, through the neighborhood. I would hate to see that happen. Regarding the three hundred thousand, at this point, I am not inclined to go against staff's recommendation for the three hundred thousand. But overall, I like the project. I like the, the number of people that are bringing to the downtown area. I think it's a beautiful project and I think it'll help the downtown community. That concludes my comments.
I guess I'll echo your sentiment, Commissioner Wyler. I like the project too. I mean, I think it's, it's a smart move in the right direction at that bookend of the city. And I, I just have to believe that if, if we get permanent three-hundred-plus permanent residents down there, that will stimulate, I believe, growth in the downtown area. And I don't think we can, we can do it the other way. I just don't see a way where if we install new businesses and restaurants and all these things, then hope that people will come to live downtown. I think we have to do it in this order, in this fashion. You know, I'm, I'm not hung up about the park. I'm originally from Alaska, so three cars at the traffic lights is a signal art for us. I mean, it's a crisis. So, but I've never met a Californian that didn't own a car, so, uh. But on the other hand, you're right, it does have to pencil. And so I guess I can live with that in deference to what I see certainly is the greater good of getting more people downtown in, in a nicely constructed, constructed, uh, complex. I've seen the renderings, I've seen the elevations, they look great. So, so, yeah, I like it. Thank you.
I also like the, the project in favor of the, the building, the architecture, the amount of people that it's gonna bring downtown. The only, the only concern I have to share with everybody else's concern is, is the parking. But if we can work on a plan and make that work, definitely be, be okay with it. Definitely like what you've done and what you've brought.
When I started reading the, the staff report, immediately it was such high density and parking. That was, immediately jumped out at me. I continued reading it and got to some of the explanations as to why parking in an, being a native Californian, number of cars at, at home for me and my kids. And being, uh, having traveled extensively where people don't have cars, there's just no parking available, having to take public transportation opened my eyes to a lot of things. Now that as a family we've become season ticket holders for the Padres, I have discovered, walking out of my house, getting on a bus, coming to the transit over here, and get on the bus and go all the way to the baseball stadium on public transportation for five dollars instead of having to pay thirty-five dollars for a parking order. And I liked that part. It was encouraging. But as a police chaplain, I have the wonderful opportunity to sit in patrol car and deal with parking issues at two or three o'clock in the morning, blocks and blocks away from where people live because there's no parking. And that is really hard. So I would, and I like, like I said, I like the project, I, I like the concept of the ideas. I am concerned about the parking, the density also seems to be, but we really don't have much of a choice with the state mandate. I think we need a parking plan in place, which I think it's supposed to happen. So I think we, we definitely need to encourage that that, that happens. While at the same time, we need affordable housing and we need housing downtown if you wanna make our, our downtown, to help it grow economically and all the businesses and everything. We just have to bring people to live downtown. So I wanted to, together with my fellow commissioners, express those concerns. But I, I do believe that, that this is a good project that can bring, or it's a project that can bring a lot of good to our downtown. And being the first at something is always tough. And thank you for hanging in there. And I hope that, oh, I do, I do have a question though about the CEQA that was raised. I read, I read the report and it seemed like everything was okay, but I just wanna make sure that there are no questions about it being CEQA exempted.
Yeah, our feeling is that it does qualify for a CEQA exemption for infill development.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm actually not worried about the parking as they all know. I don't think people are gonna be driving in ten years, so I'm, I'm the opposite guy of all that stuff. It's hard to believe. I like the project, I really do. What I'm just concerned about is I do believe that that was agreed to at some previous time. That three hundred thousand dollars. And I believe that when people agree to things, that's how we move forward with it. And, and I think that people ought to honor what they say they're gonna do. And if you said you're gonna do it, you gotta do it. And if you never agreed to that, then I don't know how that came into this, this document. But somehow it got in this document and I read it. So somebody agreed to something at some point in time. Whether it was unbeknownst to you, I don't know. I, I think it's great. Everybody here knows I want more people downtown and I'm excited about it. I thought it'd be too tall. I drove by that site and sat there a couple of while and it's, it's pretty tall, but I don't think it'll be too bad on that seventy-five-foot side in second there when you're looking at it as you're coming in the alley. So anyways, that's my opinion.
Chairman, I, I actually meant to ask one more question of staff and it happened to split, split my mind. Mr. Martin, on the, on the development agreement, the, the three hundred thousand dollars, that's a part of that agreement. And, and I didn't notice it in there, but it may have been somewhere. Is this specifically allocated to improvements down at Kit Carson Park?
Yes, it is. It's for replacement of ball field fencing, which has been identified as a very serious need for us. And the assumption is that some of these residents will probably be engaged in, in those kinds of activities down at Kit Carson Park as well.
Were there any provisions in the development agreement for the possibility of that, those funds being used for something different?
No, that was negotiated with the city manager's office and that's where they felt the funds would be best directed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I, I was not particularly in favor of this density, of the height. When I saw the, the plans, the proposed, what I trust it will look like, I, I thought it looked pretty good. As far as the state mandate on, on parking reduction, this may be true, but we don't have to give an extra floor either. So it's not like we're dancing to the state's tune. There are things we can do that would nullify that completely. I don't see the, that many more people being such a big boost to businesses downtown. And I do think that the parking is just barely minimal. I'm gonna support the project. I do have some reservations about it. I, I see no reason why the, we should give up that three hundred thousand to the park. The parks need every penny they can get. We're giving them a floor, we're giving them units, we're giving them density transfer. I understand it's considerably more to build this now than it was four years ago. I expect it to look first-class, but I, I, I would like to, is there any way we can condition our motion that, that money goes, is, stays on for the parks or that can be reversed at any time by the council?
The council obviously will make the final decision on the, on the development agreement, but you could
but you could certainly send a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, one other thing I want to say. We have a lot of projects that are about to come online that we've reduced the parking all the way from the old police headquarters to South Escudero Boulevard to North Center City. So it's going to be interesting to see how it works out, because I know that one project where the police department used to be, they have kind of a plan. If it turns out they really don't have a parking there, they have ways of buying some property adjacent to their project to provide parking, so there's no parking that's going to come online for this. Anybody else has a comment, otherwise we entertain a motion?
I like a motion. I move to approve... Let me get the wording right here. The master and precise development plan for one hundred twenty-seven unit mixed-use development within the downtown specific plan, PHG nineteen dash zero zero one zero, with the changes as recommended by staff. And is the three hundred thousand in the development agreement?
It's already in there.
Okay. Then no further recommendation after that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, so we can vote. Okay, it looks like we have seven yes votes, so the motion carries master and precise development plan for one hundred twenty-seven unit mixed-use development within the downtown specific plan. Again, PHG nineteen dash zero zero one zero. Zoning code and specific plan amendment AC eighteen dash zero 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 six.
Good evening, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. This is a simple premise in terms of updating the codes to address different issues, but as you can tell by the staff report, it's thick and it's pretty difficult to interpret. So the presentation tonight will facilitate a high-level overview of what some of those changes are proposed to be, however the exact wording is embodied in the various exhibits to the draft. About the zoning code study, the Commissioners recall, in two thousand and eighteen, there were two code amendments that passed through the Commissioners' negotiations with the Council, and those related to self-storage facilities and state car washes. That discussion and adoption of those different ordinances at the city council level introduced the concept of looking at other types of land use categories in Arizona. And so the city council directed staff to initiate this study. I have believed in the man of that year.
And the idea was to look at...
Very specific non-residential land use categories and evaluate those regulations to see what the city or Escudero is doing, what undercurrents which is in terms of last practices, and see if that makes sense to propose the changes. As part of the research involved, meeting with stakeholders of these various land use studies, as I mentioned on the slide, those occurred in the month of January, and a series of different land use categories were put to help facilitate dialogue and manage everyone's time at those meetings. On March twentieth of this year, a city council meeting was held to receive an update about the zoning code land use study, to make sure that the preliminary recommendations were on track, confirm the approach, and make sure that we received affirmative direction to prepare the draft code changes, which are included in our resolution. And based on some of those conversations, it was directed at the city council level to potentially look into additional regulations on tobacco, smoke shops, and baking stores. And because that was a new approach previously not considered or embedded, as staff had announced presented to the public for those vendors, an additional meeting was held on the sixteenth of this month, where notices were sent to various retailers of retail in the city to solicit a better potential methodology to update those codes. And for the reason of additional outreach, the appropriate land use category is not provided in this evening's staff report, that will come at a future meeting, like the on June twenty-fifth, which relations to control tobacco, retail, and smoke shops and vape shops will be considered. Part of the reasons to do the zoning code land use study and conduct an analysis of the various land use categories did, like I said, evolved from earlier conversations on mini warehouses and self-storage facilities and car wash facilities. And the idea is just to identify and monitor the effectiveness of our existing codes. The code itself is used to protect public health, safety, and welfare, so it's a good opportunity for that intersection to make sure that the codes are set up to establish regulation to protect the quality of life of the neighborhoods of the city. City's retail and commercial trades will properize and minimize potential for nuisance businesses, which may revolve from land use compatibility issues. The others to mitigate potentially and reduce the potential for adverse secondary effects of some businesses that could relate to public health, social equity, and criminal justice, also crime prevention and white neighborhoods. So regarding the use categories or topetaries that were included in the zoning code land use study in its entirety, I don't go through very use on this slide, because I'll be covering it in detail later, but I do want to focus to the right side of the screen, the use categories that are not included. I already mentioned reference to the very last bullet line item, the tobacco-smoking, vaping regulations. That is something that any staff recommendations, it's been formulated and will return to the Board of Commissioners in a future hearing. In terms of the other uses not included, the short-term application of non-residential conversion to residential, those were both identified at the city council level to explore and research the trends and potential regulation of those uses. And they seem to deserve their own special study, not necessarily get locked down with the intensity of this use. It certainly needed to be a little bit more of their own comprehensive. The other two others, extended stay hotels and single-room occupancy hotel conversions, actually had proposed regulations, preliminary regulations that were provided at the city council on March twentieth. They have been omitted from the final regulations of staff because of its application. Many of the single-room occupancy hotel conversions are fundamentally of residential land use, and so there needs to be a underlying land use density assigned to that parcel of land, because most of the existing underutilized hotels and hotels in the city are located in areas where residential densities are not permitted. It just didn't seem like it was appropriate and necessary to identify specific regulations to control that use as part of the zoning code land use study. Also, another thing omitted was the extended stay hotels. Because of various code enforcement issues and monitoring the effectiveness of allowing longer-stay assigned hotels where transient occupancy tax would not be collected, it seemed to be something that might be worth monitoring, but not necessarily pushing forward in half of this time. So regarding the use categories included in the report, they do cover various... Or would be effectuated in various sections of the code. Those are included as exhibit B, C, and D in the staff report. Primarily, they do involve the zoning code amendments, so Article One, Article sixteen, Article twenty-six, Article fifty-seven, and Article sixty-three. And then because land use is not just regulated by the zoning code, it also involves specific plans in the city, the three prominent and relevant specific plans that have similar use allowances related to the downtown specific plan, East Valley specific plan, and South Center City specific plan. And as before mentioned, on June twenty-fifth, city staff will return the tobacco and smoking vehicle regulations for a separate notice of those variants. And exhibit B includes amendments to the general provisions, which will include definitions updated to include vehicle sales, vehicle repair services, fleet storage, tow yard storage, junk yards, and wrecking yards. Article sixteen, which is the commercial zone category, there's land use table modifications, which fundamentally controls the use authorization of commercial land use activities. Article twenty-six is industrial zones, land use table modifications to address industrial zoning districts. Article fifty-seven, which is miscellaneous use restrictions category, this is an opportunity to identify additional regulation for vehicle sales, vehicle repair services, fleet storage, tow yard storage, junk yards, and wrecking yards. And then because of its relationship with other specific plans that are ancillary conforming amendments as to forth. Exhibit C is permanently set up to address tax fee partners. Those include amendments to Article One, Article sixteen, and other ancillary conforming amendments to the downtown specific plan. And then exhibit V is the catch-all for other non-residential land use categories. Those are to address definitions include banking, barroom basement store, which is a discount price stores, consignment stores, pawn shops, secondhand stores, and thrift shops. Article sixteen and Article twenty-six, land use table modifications. Article fifty-seven to address miscellaneous use restrictions for used merchandise sales. And then Article sixty-three, which is the lodging facilities. So to go through each topic area one by one, and as mentioned previously, this is a very high-level presentation of some of the key changes. Readers are recommended to refer to exhibits for the strikeout and proposed changes. For car dealerships and sales, there tends to be only one definition set or one use category that is all encompassing. The objective of creating new definitions is to separate and differentiate between boutique car sales, which would be like a broker or an office space use, where there might be one or two vehicles on site at a time, from a true dealership or a used car, at least dealership, or trucker and heavy truck sales, which would include the sale of that vehicle fleet, but also leasing, like the U-Haul facilities. The car dealership and sales are recommended to be authorized by additional use permit, and then to allow boutique sales in commercial areas by right, which we do today. New requirements are identified for having a permanent building on site, reductions in amplified sound, parking areas, maintenance, lighting, display, landscaping, and screening. For auto vehicle repair services, new definitions were established or recommended to be established to help differentiate through different intensities of repair. Currently, our code does allow auto supply or auto parts retail with incidental repair, but this expands the opportunity to regulate other types of repair facilities beyond just auto body shops, so limited vehicle repair, general vehicle repair, and commercial vehicle repair, new definitions proposed. Limited vehicle repair would be the traditional neighborhood commercial type of facility, where there might be tire installations or oil changes. General vehicle repair would be of auto body shop, more intensive vehicle repair services. And commercial vehicle repair would be like boat repair or truck repair, something that's clearly larger vehicle type. For the limited work and general work, types of repair facilities, those would be recommended to be conditional use permits in the commercial areas. And then for the larger facilities to require conditional use permit in industrial areas, new requirements were similarly established to address permanent building, amplified sound, parking areas, maintenance, lighting, storage limitations, residential street adjacency, display, landscaping, and then if there's incidental tow truck operations that are in addition to truck, truck storage, your... For fleet and junk yard storage, the key distinction in the definition set is to create a separate definition for principal fleet storage type of use facility versus something that's clearly accessory incidental to the use. And the idea is to allow, continues to allow, the accessory fleet storage, so it's any business that has its own truck, to allow that to be permitted by right. But if there is a vacant lot with no other land use activity, to require conditional use permit if it is the primary use. And then likewise, required conditional use permit for junkyard and tow yards in the M2 zone. Currently, those are permitted by right as outdoor storage. And then similar related new requirements for building and amplified sound, parking areas, maintenance, lighting, storage limitations, landscape, and screening. And because this involves the outdoor storage of vehicles, prohibit cell activities, limitations on tow truck operations to tow yards, so it is a limited repair facility, like a tire shop, that there is not a fleet of tow truck on site. And then because of the potential loss of employment opportunities for sales tax generated from fleet storage or junkyard facilities, is to require demand analysis for those facilities. And that's similar to the provision that was added for the self-storage facilities, where there's very minimal jobs on site. So this would just ensure that there truly is a demand for that use, and if there is potential loss of revenue to the city, that there might be some mitigation that could be addressed through a future development area. Taxicule partners are currently addressed elsewhere than municipal code, and so that is to carry forth that definition into the zoning code, require conditional use permit for all taxicule partners in the city, and then establish new operator obligations. So and also a separation requirement of a thousand feet from any other partner, five hundred feet from any other licensed onsite alcohol sales established. Laundromats and dry cleaning, new definitions proposed, required conditional use permits only if there's onsite pressing, so this would not affect a majority of the existing dry cleaning pickup and drop-off operations. And then for commercial laundry, or usually outsourced, is to require conditional use permit in those zones. New requirements for chemically used in residential areas, where new prevention and solid waste discharge is provided under Article fifty-seven. For lodging, this gets into Article sixty-three of the zoning code, new requirements for retail, restaurant use open space, or use space and maintenance requirements, parking areas, new operator obligations. Use merchandise sales, this involves thrift stores, pawn shops, consignment stores, secondhand stores. The idea is to require conditional use permit for thrift stores, pawn shops... Sorry. Thrift stores, consignment stores, and secondhand stores, to prohibit pawn shop citywide. New requirements for collection sorting, closed activities, property maintenance, and storefront appearance is provided. Parking basement stores, this was largely lifted from the city of Vista, and established a new regulation control a few years ago. Parking basement stores is simply discount stores as defined, but would exclude other types of retailers that might be selling things at a reduced price, such as like bookstore or restaurants, or convenience store retailers. The idea is to require conditional use permit for parking basement stores. There is a typo in the exhibit D. That is on page fifty-five. Currently, our downtown specific plan does not admit discount stores, and so the staff recommendation would be consistent with the existing regulation set for our downtown specific plan. And on page fifty-five, it does list parking basement stores as a permitted by conditional use permit in one of the districts, but we would like to restore that activity prohibited. And banks and check cash and payday, new definitions provided for ATMs, banks, which are the traditional charter institutions, check cash and payday, which are fringe institution or unchartered establishments. Not to change the regulation of... Not to change the regulation of the permitted use of ATMs and banks by right, however, require conditional use permit if the use does have a drive-through facility. And then lastly, a big key change is prohibit banks from corner lots in the downtown area. Currently, there are thirteen within a two-block radius in our downtown area, and a lot of banks, our corner lots have shown to reduce pedestrian activity and synergy because it interrupts continuous storefront. Any other key changes to prohibit check cash and payday establishments citywide? City Vesco view currently has the highest rate of check cash payday establishments in North County. I believe there's fourteen, which far exceeds any of the coastal communities, as well as there are in inland, distant San Marcos. Drive-through establishments require conditional use permit citywide. This is similar with others jurisdictions in North County. Also clarifies conditions related to screening and access control, new requirements for canopies and architecture or service exchange areas, and identify some use limitations of hours of operation when it's adjacent to a residential use, like if it's within a hundred feet unless it's modified through that permit review body. And the last item that's included on the docket for this evening's agenda item, it's going to be a new study, is off-site liquor sales. A new definition was added, and the goal is to require conditional use permit citywide. So that's a very high-level overview of the volume of changes that are provided in the different exhibits. The exhibits were separated into several different categories just to provide some organization to it, so it might be easier to group some of the things together to help track the changes. There is one other thing that I thought just before the meeting, that in addition to the bargain basement store prohibition in the downtown area is page thirty, the very bottom of the page, tow truck operation is intended to repair. That was to identify accessory use to a repair service. Repair service is only allowed in GT and SG zoning districts, not the CCU zoning district. So the permitted slash conditional use allowance would have to be transferred from CCU to SG to reflect and coordinate with the use allowances for repair facilities and elsewhere in that specific plan. So those two suggested modifications. That concludes the initial presentation, and certainly will get into the details. Thank you.
Thank you. That was thorough.
Yes. Where's the thirteenth district? It's up by thirteenth street.
It is. It's in the South Center City specific plan, so along Escondido Boulevard and Center City Parkway at thirteen. It's the commercial node.
So it's not on Escondido Boulevard itself? No, we did the specific plan for Escondido Boulevard.
I did anticipate the need to go through some of the specific plans. Potentially, because there's a lot of changes. So I'd be glad to pull it up. But the thirteenth district is in the beige color, so you're right, it does not go all the way to Escondido Boulevard.
It does not, okay.
It's along Center City Parkway. The...
That's fine, no, because I noticed that every place else there was, oh, thrift stores. They were all conditioned except for the thirteenth district. I didn't want to cross through Escondido Boulevard area there in sales, so we had thrift stores or something aligned in there trying to improve through that specific plan. Thank you.
Okay, does any...
Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, Mr. Strachan, and this is only a curiosity question. What's the issue with onsite pressing at laundry mats or dry cleaning? What's the issue there?
Well, most dry cleaning pickup, drop-off storefronts is what comprises what most of us would use for dry cleaning, so there's probably fairly little establishments in the city of Escondido that have onsite pressing. But the issue has been more of a public health standpoint because of the chemicals that are traditionally used with the onsite pressing. So the idea is to have some sort of use heightened use allowance so that there's an ability to revoke or recondition a project if there becomes, if there's an issue with that use. But it's primarily tied to like a public health component.
Wouldn't, wouldn't they have to get some sort of permitting from the APCD or something to operate these sort of things that's got emissions that are, could be harmful?
Potentially, I'm not certain.
Potentially, yeah. Okay. All right, thanks.
Sorry, Mike, I was mistaken. The thirteenth district has bargain basement stores, and the CUP for the ninth overlay and the Escondido Boulevard Commercial is the secondhand thrift stores. Is that going through the specific plan? And you can come back, you can, it's just a question, I was reading through all this.
The districts... Ninth district is, one district actually does run through the whole area.
Right there.
It includes Peterson Stone, but it's not include any, sorry, it's not include Peterson Stone, so it does not include the corner lots that are on Escondido Boulevard tonight.
Got it. Oh, I see, now, okay, there's, I'm sorry, my glasses are so bad.
So the, the South Center City specific plan is something that went before the planning commission as advisory role of the city council, I think it was March, February of last year. And the objective was to have a little bit more of a self-contained community where there was a variety of, a diverse set of uses. So there were some districts that were kind of established or set aside that had intense land use activities. And then as uses transitioned to the more smaller lots that might be adjacent to residential, especially along like Escondido Boulevard or the Southern Entry Gateway where future mixed use would be permitted, was to kind of desensitize those uses so that there was a little bit more of a use compatibility in retailing focus or office.
A couple of questions on, well, the payday loan is no longer permitted use, and we have a lot of those within the city. Those existing non-conforming uses, will, will there ever be able to go away?
They could be their use. So the Article sixty-one of our zoning code is established non-conforming provisions. So essentially, existing operations will become non-conforming establishments and can continue as non-conforming uses and be privileged right to all those provisions contained therein. And so the city would continue to allow ongoing release of business license renewals until such time that the use is considered abated and the use is considered discontinued if it has been six months of it not being in operation. So there would be an opportunity over the long term to bait those uses, but the key change would be the authorization allowing more uses to pop up. So, yeah, there is a long-term horizon of aid in the loss of the existing non-conforming provisions.
Yeah, I've always felt that these parasites shouldn't be allowed to exist. As an attorney, I had clients who went in and got a three-hundred-dollar loan, but they only got two-hundred-and-sixty cash. And next week, they couldn't pay it back, so they gave them forty bucks to hold the loan over. And after six months after they paid them a thousand dollars, they still owed them the three-hundred. Yeah, so, um, the, the little bit on carlets. Now, there are some of those existing now where you display a carlet. Do, does that become abated only if they leave it down for six months?
I'm very sorry, you were referring to like car dealership, is that...
Yeah. I think Jeep dealership on Auto Park is always got one of them.
So the apparatus allowances are provided for in the proposed changes. So I believe it will be reviewed as part of the use permit process, so that's something that would be in the purview of the planning commission in that sense. I'm going to try to get exactly which... All right, so this is for car dealerships, display, elevating vehicles above the average grade of the site for display purposes shall be limited to the use of landscaped urban burns or mountains or permanent structures designed so as to be architecturally compatible with existing structures or buildings on the project site or adjacent thereto. Use of temporary structures or devices for such purposes is specifically prohibited. All vehicle inventory must be stored onsite and run in public for that. So the objective is not to diminish the dealership's ability to still get line of sight to some of those sales, but to make sure that any lifting apparatus was more architecturally compatible with some measures that are taken today.
And what's the staff position on Goodwill being able to utilize that old writing store, which was in the Center City urban area, which doesn't permit that type of store?
It doesn't permit it today, so recommendations were to carry forward the existing regulations.
Any other questions, staff? Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on this in any way?
Hello, David Hewitt, I'm with Director of Projects with Goodwill Industries. And I'm thankful for the time tonight to allow us to share our thoughts on some of the land use issues. As a bit of background, Goodwill has four locations in the city of Escondido. One is at the corner of Washington and Center City Parkway, that's our retail store in the nation center. And then we have a warehouse on Downland Place, which is our own distribution hub, and then another unit on South Center City Parkway, that's the donation center. And finally, we have a little facility at the Flit Center on Grand Avenue. We've been at the Center City relocation, the retail store, for about eleven years now. And the building is about thirteen thousand square feet, and we got it. And so we were out looking for other opportunities. And what we found was the right estate. And we're pretty much unconscious, so we weren't sure if we could be able to get in that building. It was an in-law or a leasehold, but we thought if we could make an offer to see if we'd buy it and then figure out if the use could work, we could make a start deal. We were able to, you know, we turned around building on contract, so we could get some sort of approval to build up right there. That's why we're here. When we approached the city about the idea of managing location, Mr. Strachan informed that you guys were leading the team, and that this might be an opportunity for us to share our thoughts, and so we're here. Our current location, like I said, is about thirteen thousand square feet, it's on point sixty acres, and we have thirty-nine parking spaces. The right estate store is seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet, and... Okay, that's our current facility. And there are another...
I think I pointed it to...
There you go. Thank you. There's a... Google Earth. And as you can see, the facility challenges us a bit in that the only access is out the front of the building, and which creates a little bit of a problem for us. The sales store is also a two-stores, I don't get an opportunity to be in the store, but that also is not a desirable question for here right now. The, in contrast, the right estate store, it's seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet, it's on two point two acres, and has a hundred left of parking spaces. We see this as an opportunity to correct the challenges that we're facing now and create a bring light for the city as well, in that it would last opportunity to sell this building to a user that would be more suited to that building. The location, as you can see, our current location is right at the corner of Center City Parkway in Washington. The right estate store is about a block away, and it is located in the Center City urban There's the mural of the building. It works very well for us, suited pretty much our niche ways of design, in that it allows us to have an entrance on the front with, again, from this, you can see there's a, was a prescription, a pickup area, which could be our donation drop-off area. And we would have processing in the back, okay, we're like forty percent of the sales sector, or here's a thirty percent division between the processing and the retail floor. We find that in our business model, the forty percent works better because it allows us the opportunity to be more efficient by having that increased holding power. We have keyword charts on about service account. The, again, strength side, where that location precludes us specifically for selling a sale of merchandise, and so we would like to ask you consideration to amend what we was filed on the staff report, which is to not allow that use in the second city urban district. The, the outline that I saw, there was a bullet point that read, it was staff's recommendation to conditional permit fifth store, secondhand dealers, and consignment stores within the CT zone, and we would like to respectfully request even if they're adding the CCU district in the area to allow this building to, this building to be available for rest. We envision this facility being similar to our tourist store, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to see that store, but it's twenty thousand square foot building, and it has a donation area, it's a seat that's hidden from the street view, and we have the entire operation enclosed in the building. There are no, there's no storage of any bins or product on the outside of the building, it's all handled inside. Our retail and merchandising is professionally done in the sense that we can compete with anybody, any retailer in today's market, with the various stores fair in the merchandise as it appears. And lastly, and probably most importantly, this facility would include an employment center, which is their foundation defining those various employment work. And anyway, we would individually have a mastermind inside this building. So in closing, I'd just say that we would work hard to see the series of expectations, be a good neighbor, keep the facility clean, and be conscientious about in-considered orders, and we'd like to request your support in this amendment.
Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak? And if I could get you to fill out a speaker slip before you leave.
Sure. I'm President and CEO of Goodwill Industries in San Diego County and River County, and I just wanted to take the opportunity, commissioners, to address you and to say thank you for the opportunity that we've had, and we've been really great partners with Goodwill, who believe that we have served the community well, overcome barriers to employment for many of the residents in San Diego County. We employ over thirteen hundred and fifteen employees right now, forty percent of them have disability or significant barriers to employment. So we always over hire in order to give people the opportunity to work, and we believe that that strengthens families, strengthens communities, and helps a lot of the issues that our communities are facing with homelessness and other obstacles. So we were established in nineteen thirty in San Diego County. We have thirty stores throughout San Diego County. We have thirty stores throughout San Diego County, forty-four facilities all told. Over the last ten years, we really worked hard to improve our stores, the look of our stores, through model four of the last six months, to really be a competitor, not with the first stores, but with retail stores. I think if you go into a Ross or T K Maxx, and I come into a Goodwill, you will see much of the difference. They're beautiful stores, they're well merchandised, and the people in there have great pride in what we do. We also are in the Little Well Center in Escondido, we provide free services to veterans in that facility. And we hire the employees that work in there to provide those services to veterans through the sales and use of goods. So we are a five-by-one-three-C nonprofit, but we're also a social enterprise, what we call a mission-integrated social enterprise. So a lot of our mission is writing in the facilities where that we operate. So the people that we hire, we provide them with career path, upskilling, soft skills training. Everyone that comes to us is employed, or anyone that comes into the donation center is given all the services that we give to anyone free in the community. So we just asked for you to consider our use in this space. We think that it's a more efficient space, it'll keep a lot of trucks off the road. And in our current facility, it's not very efficient. We have to service that location a lot. And we also have to rent another storefront down the road. So this would be all inclusive and really help the efficiency of our operation. And I think it would be beautiful, and we'd be proud to have it in your city. We always want to be an asset in whatever community that we serve, in whatever community that we operate. So we make that commitment to you, not only through our charter as a nonprofit, but also as a business operator, that we want to be proud, and we want to be proud of the system that we operate and have in our time and in the location. But thank you for your brief information.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're closing the public hearing. I don't even know how to pursue this. My first thought would be to rebrand the, you can call it a retail establishment, because it is more of an upscale than typical, at least the features that I've seen from your other store. Does staff have any suggestions?
I get a sense that the chair's interested in modifying either this category of land use by its definition, which is very specific to that and other type of thrift establishments where donated goods arrive or sorted and are retailed. Or potentially carve something out for this particular site. And that's the problem of the commission. When making policy decisions, it's always good to think about the long-term consequences of those type of things, both in particular with this site or elsewhere within that same district. Might be helpful to look at the district boundaries. So the CCU urban district runs along kind of the northern and west section of the downtown. A lot of the land uses are already established, but at the same time, there are new projects that have come in. Latitude Two is under construction and near completion with occupancy already being filled, which would be catty corner to that. And then also surrounding the project site is an existing residential, Latitude Three. So some of those things, the land use can add, dealerships can be sorted out through a conditionally used permit process, which again would be something that could be under the purview of the planning commission. But like I said, with the long-term policy implications, it's good to think about what the build-out of that district and where districts within the vicinity will be if there's ever any interest in expanding the park across Woodward. So that's all things that can be considered as part of the commission's deliberation.
Thank you. Any discussion on this?
Well, I guess I would just chime in with, yeah, I, yeah, I'm familiar with Goodwill and the good work they do. As a veteran, I certainly appreciate the work they do for veterans, so perhaps I have a built-in bias. But they're a job creator, a job finder, they support veterans. No, I think it's a pretty honor to thank these guys, too. I guess my question would be to you, Mr. Strong. I know I'm phrasing this incorrectly, but can we spot zone something like that so that we don't set a broader precedent in that spot?
Technically, there are opportunities. There are jurisdictions that have assigned specific parcels or addresses for particular uses to, as to not create non-conformities. The City Vista Downtown Specific Plan is a good example of that, where I believe gas stations were prohibited except for, before that were existing. So the specific plan had a carve-out allowance for that use at those locations. Another thing to contemplate is the commission's discussion, and then the subsequent decision of City Council microdifying the car wash regulations, which required an annual conditionally used permit and some separation requirements from similar facilities, under the consideration of the old roller raking site. In adopting that ordinance, Council obligated a carve-out exception for that particular site application. It's something that's not traditionally done, but it has happened, those two examples.
Thank you.
Mr. Strong, is there, would we, as a commission, I guess, maybe the discussed discussion item, could we add in the definition for second-hand store, or whatever category that Goodwill falls into, that there's an exemption for nonprofit? And even place a further, I don't know, that it has to be a minimum of ten thousand square feet of space? Or add some, some other items along there that fits their business model? That I think we can all agree that they do a great service for the community? And that maybe we add in some of that wording so that it doesn't create something that we don't want, you know, down the road?
Yeah, my recommendation is maybe just to make it as simple as a consensus recommendation to say that this... The recommendation for the planning commission could be to the City Council to consider some store allowances to allow this particular use at the location of not opening it up elsewhere, rather than coming up with the exact language tonight, because that might be pretty difficult to achieve. So the planning commission can have a vague recommendation to the City Council to pursue that, if there's consensus to do that. The definition set that's provided for under the Article One recommendations for change, all, most office that sell used merchandise are for shops largely. What separates that from our second-hand dealers is kind of that exchange between a donated item and then, or the whole purchase of things that is discounted sales. So I don't know if the definition set is probably the way to go. Like I mentioned earlier, if the commission's interested in having some sort of carve-out for this particular site, that could be just the recommendation for the City Council.
Would, and I'm sorry, would that require a change to the downtown specific plan?
Currently, those uses are prohibited.
Is that right?
Yeah. Whether, it was quite a sheer coincidence that the city's undertaking a sponsored effort to evaluate these uses, and the timing couldn't have worked out better for Goodwill. So under either a city-sponsored effort or privately initiated, we have to be some of the members of the downtown to offer us that use, either by permitted, by renews, or a special conditional use permit.
So across the street from that, that's eventually going to be the library, the new library in the park and all that. It's some council person's laid out at one point in time or another, is that correct?
Conceptually, there's a formalized document.
Right. That's, that's supposed to be that whole civic center synergy there, potentially?
I could ask that, if, I mean, do we need to formalize that? Motion to approve this and, or a motion to recommend carve-out, or what we do, what's...
I still have a question before we get into motions. I'm sorry, we can, and then we can have discussions during, as well. There's no other sites in the city for that?
We've been looking, we're always looking, we haven't found a site.
And then the site downtown in Grant, is that going to be closed down?
We may sell that, or we may do that.
And then the other site, if you're going to close down, up Center City Parkway?
We'd like to sell the retail.
So you're not gaining much square footage by the time you consolidate all those inside there? Because you have thirteen thousand square feet, and you're going to use up those, those spaces. Then you're going to use forty percent of that retail space. So the gain of square footage for retail is not dramatically increased if you're consolidating all those inside there. I just, I'm not, I love the Goodwill, and I love everything you're doing, I'm just not enamored with you in that spot. I think that's a quality spot in the city of Escondido that might have other benefits to the community. That's my only question, that's why I'm asking, is there perhaps a different spot? Drops are far removed at the Goodwill, I mean. So anyways, just food for thought for folks.
But I think you mentioned also, did you not, that there were some other considerations above, beyond the gain of four K, uh, square feet retail, but being all on one floor, picking up all the additional parking, right? Having a back service instead of servicing and drop-offs at the front, right? So there were some other considerations.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson, and that's right. It's an efficiency issue as much as it is a retail or revenue generating for us. It's the ability to really be a good citizen and have all the donation collection inside and not outside, as you've probably seen on that pretty prominent corner, too, of Washington and Center City Parkway. And the holding power that would create, the, the, our trucks wouldn't have to run up and down the road, it's often, which would be great. And then the parking, which is a huge issue at the current site, both for the donor and for the shopper. And then the ones, the one floor that adds a lot of efficiency in us being able to produce right there, put directly on the floor. So thank you.
If I may, Chair, my understanding is that what's been noticed tonight is a downtown specific plan change for several zoning code, but what you're talking about now is a specific project, really? And I think that that's really not appropriate based on what's been agenda-sighted today. Talking about a specific site, spot zoning is also a discriminatory form of zoning. It's something the city lost on the SGO Country Club case for discriminating against that particular owner when all of the other adjacent zoning is prohibited. I think that this would have to come back as a particular project for that area, or you could look at the general provisions in the downtown specific plan on a particular district or area-wide use, which is what's before you today.
I was a little concerned about the fact that this was not noticed, as far as this is talked about. Would it be wrong to, to move to, to approve what's before us with the caveat that the council reviewed that? Or would we want to start from scratch with a agenda item?
No, I think you certainly recommend approval or changes to the uses that are allowed or being proposed for you today. But targeting one specific project provides certain problems, considering there was no notice for a particular project, a particular site that's surrounding the basic property.
So it's not as simple as on page fifty-six, putting a C in there under the Center City or, sure, for thrift shop? But that, you could absolutely do, absolutely do that, but that's my understanding, but that's, that would apply to the entire area.
Yeah, I think what the deputy attorney is referring to is that getting into project-specific matters requires duly noticed item. But the use authorization is fully within the purview of the commission, because it has been noticed accordingly. And as you pointed out on a specific page, there's that land use category type of proposed changes.
But what about the, it's not in agreement with the downtown specific plan?
Well, currently, the use is not permitted in the downtown, and staff's recommendation is commensurate with existing regulations. But the planning commission can recommend something.
But, but isn't there a bigger process to change this, a specific plan than just putting the C in on page, on the, as a condition use permit?
Not for the subjects matter that was agenda-adjunged, yes. So through a separate process, if there was a use allowance or conditionally permitted use for Goodwill in this relocation, they would undertake their own permitting process for project-specific application.
And would that require a C V?
If the commission directs that change.
Well, I'd just like, I'd like to, I'd like to, go ahead and make that available, but still have some kind of restraint or...
Go ahead, that's it. I think if you change, I'd rather be project-specific to this one particular spot, because if you open that up to the whole downtown area of having thrift stores, everything we've been working on for the downtown area now has been changed to allow that, and everybody can come through here, and we may not be on the council anymore, or the planning commission, excuse me. And then they'll still be able to get that through. And so that the vision that we've been casting for this area will be thrown in that whole area that you see on the screen right now. And so I'd rather work specifically with their project versus allowing the entire area to all of a sudden be that way. So to just throw the C in there is going to really open up the opportunity for the Salvation Army and everybody else to kind of get through there. Is that correct?
Correct, if it was just changing, you know, something that's prohibited to allow by use permit. There is something similar to Starbucks that was approved six months ago or so at the Escondido and Valley Parkway, so it was within the same Center City urban district. There were several qualifiers that were added to this location and separation of uses so that the number proliferation of drive-through establishments wouldn't kind of concentrate within that district. So like I mentioned earlier, there might be some ways to provide some limitations on it, but if there is general direction from the planning commission to kind of look into working with Goodwill to find suitable locations within that district, whether it be that site or something else, that staff can come up with some recommendations prior to City Council. Have it thoroughly in the attorney's office to make sure that there's no issues about spot zoning. But, you know, that can be the direction from the commission is to do something similar to that, to control potential proliferation of thrift stores in that district.
And what's your due diligence period right now? Because that's what you're working against right now, right?
We have a hundred and twenty days.
A hundred and twenty days from when?
Execution of the back end, which is about a week ago.
Okay, so we have three months right now, so we could come back to the next meeting and review this at that point, and still give you time to go through that process and have a better plan formulated as well, based on the due diligence period, correct? You know, I don't, I don't like to push things off, but at the same time, I think we're just kind of jumping into this thing.
If the commission's interested in kind of delaying a decision on what to do with this particular use in that particular zone, the draft resolution can be modified to omit that. And that subsequent conversation can be had on June twenty-fifth, where staff is going to return with the tobacco regulations anyway. No matter, notwithstanding, the item would ultimately need to be decided by the City Council. So the earliest that that would occur is probably in July, with limited meetings, it's likely beginning of August. And then if it is authorized by a conditional use permit, then there would be a separate process on top of that. So the hundred and twenty-day contingency period may need to be extended regardless of the outcome of those conversations. If that's a contingency, I'm closing escrow's permit in hand.
Can you extend it?
We can.
We can. But I don't know.
Right, okay.
I think that the seller, one of the reasons that we're able to purchase it is that it's going to be a cash deal, and it's going to be quick, and so I don't know how to sell it.
So what would the alternative be if we were to approve this and give staff direction to come up with some, whether you add, like you did for Starbucks, like we did for Starbucks?
There are a lot of regulatory tools that can be deployed to address this. Some agencies have cap limitations on the number of certain uses in their jurisdictions, and that could be extrapolated and applied to certain districts. Same with the separation of use, or minimum site requirements to limit the number of candidate sites that this could occur on. So there are a lot of different opportunities. We would have to analyze those, you know, and spend some time looking into what would make the most sense, that would work for the community, and not to mention the applicant. So it won't happen tonight, but it's something that we'll need to spend some time on, and either return or the recommendation can be from funding issues to come up with something.
Well, this particular zoning code, specific plan amendment, is this going to go to the council, separate from the tobacco, or is that all going to go at the same time?
The idea was to bring everything together at once.
So either way, there's no way that we're going to be able to do something that's going to definitively put them in the writing building tonight? The one thing you said about the size of the lot, I'm just thinking, I don't know of another piece of property anywhere in the downtown specific plan, or basically anywhere right now that exists, that would rival that size of that building?
You have the dollar store.
This map over here actually shows underlying lot sizes, so this is the property that's unidentified preliminarily. This is residential, but yeah, there's opportunities.
Is the dollar store in our quarter?
No. But here's the thing, is the last time we did the Home Depot parking lot, who's happy? We did that at the spur of the moment, because we were done, we were tired, and we just voted, and said, let's just do it. And everyone was stressed by that doggone placement, and we're not very pleased with looking at that Home Depot parking lot. I don't mean to be, but I'll just throw that out there. I think we need to go through a process where we get it the way it needs to be, so that it's correct, instead of just trying to shotgun someone down right now, at this And you can go.
Currently, it's prohibited use.
Correct.
Or, it's already prohibited use. Okay. So I think we do need to do some kind of a process. And why do we, we need to vote, and then, but we can't do a separate, now having put it on the agenda, right, to make a vote to direct staff to work with the applicant?
You don't have to give a vote, you can just direct staff to come back with some recommendations as to this particular item.
Okay. I would say, why don't we do something like that, and come back and see what you all recommend are dealing with this directly, and a lot, understand this better than we do. Because it's already prohibited, because if it wasn't, it'd be, well, what happens then? You speed up the process while this is going on, and you get approved, you know, but it's already prohibited. It's going to have to go through a processing, right? I'd say, why don't we do that? All right, yeah. See, Stan is the guy that does all this.
Put me on the spot here.
I'll stick with what Stan says.
You know what, I do really agree with what Commissioner Romo and Commissioner Garcia are coming up with, because we're trying to look at something on a very site-specific with, without a lot of background information, and without our ability to kind of think this through, except for right up here on the dial. So I think I'll make a motion that we approve Planning Case Number AZ eighteen, am I on the wrong one?
Yeah.
Yeah. AZ eighteen zero 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 six, as recommended by staff, and with, I guess, a directive to staff to come back with recommendations specifically related to the request by, by the Goodwill.
Second.
Interesting, I push above the second, and it comes up to Commissioner Romo.
And if you want a question, you're there. It wasn't once requested yet. I will have to let the court talk to you now. All right, so I have three, and five, and seven, eight blocks, and no people had a
Okay, we have seven yes votes, so we are going to approve zoning code and specific plan amendment AZ eighteen dash zero 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 six, with the recommendation that staff come back with a directive for this project. Is that correct? Or communication, does anybody in the audience wish to speak about anything else? Seen none? No.
Could I just say one more thing before you close? I want to thank you for really thinking out of the box and trying to make it work, and we understand the ramifications and things that you have to consider, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any comments from the commissioners? Next meeting?
June twenty-fifth, the June eleventh meeting is canceled.
Then we are adjourned.